I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have roll call, please.
Ms. Ms. Wallace, Sally Miller.
Present.
Voltsen, here, near me.
Yes. Citizen comments, looks like Sid is not here yet, or maybe not, I don't know.
Yeah, and that could be my, you know, she wanted to be at the last meeting and, and I said now we have a presentation afterwards, so we can just have you come to the next meeting, so I did not talk to her.
Oh.
To find out if she is coming for sure, so if she doesn't show up, she doesn't show up.
It's okay, and media's not here, so.
Yeah, she was gonna give an update on what, what was happening with the organic collection sites.
Right. Okay, any other citizen comments? We have no public hearings tonight, we have reading and approval of minutes from September thirteenth.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from September thirteenth meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And we have the, uh, the September thirteenth condensed version of the minutes.
I will move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from nine thirteen twenty-two.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have consent agenda, consistent of audit of city bills, pay as but number six, and certificate of substantial completion, that is for the airport runway project, I believe?
Uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, gambling reports from the Legion and the Eagles. I noticed the Legion did not have the schedule C. Uh, but we can talk about that, or not. Um, community education and recreation report, library board minutes, tree board minutes, and the raffle permit from Ducks Unlimited, which is, the actual permit is at your place. So I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion? Questions?
Yeah, fifteen, the click, um, content, is that for one month, or what is that for the whole, what, what is that for the?
I guess I don't know off the top of my head, still looking at it, but, um, I think it was, you know, it included like the Harvest Fest.
Okay.
It might have included some of the fair follow-up as well, but I can get back to them with the actual dates of the.
Yeah, it, they bill us monthly, so it could be that it's a shorter billing for them that month, depending on what's going on, but.
So it's whatever they.
Whatever they bill us for that month.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Um, petitions, request, and communications.
Yeah, so the first one is the final policy for the tourism marketing assistance program. So you got a couple things in front of you, one's the actual policy, um, the, uh, the purpose, um, uh, the purpose for what the tourism money is going towards, qualifications for assisting, uh, organizations, and then, uh, on, on the backside of it, it talks about, uh, uh, the following form of, of information, and then actually one of the things I put in there is, uh, an actual copy of the form that was created on Google Forms that will be attached to the website, so anybody that's interested in having their event marketed by, uh, the tourism, uh, lodging tax money, uh, can fill out that form and submit it, it goes into Ashley, and then Ashley will make it available to the tourism board, so they'll review it and, uh, make a, uh, recommendation, uh, decision on whether or not that specific, uh, event would be marketed, uh, by the tourism lodging tax dollars.
And that would be following the policy, of course.
That'd be following the policy, you know, and a couple key components of that is that, you know, one, one of the things they did is they looked further into what you can use tourism dollars for, and, um, a couple key aspects of that is, it, it can't go to the individual organizations, businesses, things like that. Uh, it's for marketing, and so then, uh, this is utilizing the marketing company that we have to do the marketing, and then there's actually, um, some predetermined, uh, formats for marketing, so the, they would be incorporated into that. And then there's, there's gonna be some events, for instance, the Fall Harvest Fest was actually a event that the city co-sponsored, uh, 'cause it's a community event, so that, that would probably, uh, rise to a level that would get additional support, um, to promote, uh, Stevens County Fair is another one, uh, versus, uh, some of the other organizations that may request some, some marketing assistance, so, so this is the way they can get their events marketed.
It's nice to see that there's some formality now, um, I don't know, it's still confusing to me, but the tourism board has vetted this out, and that, I mean, so used, so it talks about example of events that meet the criteria for, like, the county fair, art fairs, and performing arts, but it does not really talk about events co-sponsored by the city.
So would we, uh, would the city have to do this for, like, Prairie, Prairie Harvest Fest?
To apply for it?
Yeah.
No.
So then maybe you wanna put the, I mean, to me, that, you, that's a pretty big thing, if you, that that's not in there. I mean, if you're gonna be, if the, if the tourism board is supposed to get these applications and follow the procedure, the process here, it doesn't say anything about if it's city-sponsored or co-sponsored, there's a whole different tool of money that can be used for that?
'Cause this, well, the easiest way to answer that is the tourism board is the city. So it'd be, why, why would the city have to apply to the city to be able to use city funds for a city event? That's gonna meet the criteria for that, you know, so that's maybe the answer to that.
Maybe then clarifying what sponsor, co-sponsoring means. What does a co-sponsor mean? And that might not be anything, I mean, but what does it mean to be a co-sponsor of an event?
Yeah, we can go back and we can talk about.
You know, I mean, you can, but it's just, to me, it still leaves a, um, like I said, I like that there's formality here, and there's a process, and a process that everyone can look at, except for certain situations that aren't really outlined in here. And again, maybe that's just my take on it. Just trying to keep it fair and equitable to everyone who applies.
Well, and I, yeah, and I'll, I'll bring that back to the tourism board, and maybe, maybe there just needs to be a statement in here about, about the city, even, 'cause there is only one event that the city would sponsor, and that is the community event for the city, which is, you know, one of the other things I would just share with you too is that it's my understanding now that there is a new chamber director coming on, uh, and one of the things that we talked about in the tourism board is to reach out to that new director, 'cause technically, according to the, the ordinance that set up the lodging tax, the, uh, the chamber is part of the tourism board, the chamber director is a member of the tourism board, uh, and there has to be a discussion about that, because there was really kind of a split that took place between the chamber and, and the tour, 'cause initially, if you remember, the tourism was being done through the chamber, there is an employee that was part of the chamber that was doing it, and then, um, things, not to go into detail on it, but there was a split that took place, because there want, there wanted to be more focus on marketing, uh, and, and that's where this stuff all kinda got started again, um, putting it together, so ideally, we would like to be working, uh, with the chamber, you know, on all the different events. For instance, right now, there was some question about whether or not the Parade of Lights was gonna take place this year, because they did not have a, a director that could coordinate that, put it together, but it's my understanding that that's probably gonna take place now, uh, and things like, and that's part of the, the calendar of events that the, the tourism board looks at with regards to general marketing, and not necessarily event-specific marketing, like the metal arts festival that took place, or the Fall Harvest Festival.
And is that tourism calendar, the listing of event on the tourism calendar, is that located, where's that located?
Uh, it, it, it should be on the tourism board, the tourism website, but, um, that's part of what we're trying to get established, is to have those things in place, and then organizations, you know, can, they don't have to apply to have us market their event, they could just have the event put on the calendar, so people know it's coming up. Uh, and then, in some cases, there's things that aren't necessarily, you know, um, a tourism marketing event, but it's still gonna be mentioned just in general terms, as far as things going on in Morris, you know, 'cause that's part of what you want people to come to town for, is all the different things that are going on in town, whether it's shopping, or restaurants, or whatever it is.
Absolutely, and that's why when I read this, Blaine, I was just still confused about what, and, and maybe this is the first step of organizing something, but it's still, I was still confused on, um, okay, marketing for events, but then they'll market now, they'll put the event on their calendar, but then that's not mark, I mean, I just still confused on what actually dollars the marketing is, and again, maybe it's just me having a, a blog that's just not here.
Uh, but this would be, you know, the next step from just identifying the things that are going on to actually putting together, uh, a marketing package that would include, uh, maybe some print, maybe some radio, maybe, and they've identified, um, different areas, you know, one of the things that, we talked about this before, I think at the last meeting, um, we talked about distances for how far out do we go, well, it's anything outside of Stevens County, that's what it says in here, but then if we're gonna market, you know, a specific event on social media, in, on radio, on, uh, in, in print, 'cause there is some print that takes place, you know, and it's not gonna be local, it's gonna be in areas trying to draw people to come into town, so there'll be a, kind of a predetermined package of what that looks like, to include identifying where the funding's coming from for the advertisement, uh, and then these events would be plugged into that, that package, that design of that marketing scheme.
That's what they're applying for, when they fill out the application, they're applying for the marketing package, that's.
Yeah. And then they would, they would be able to get in contact with Click Content Studios, to be, talk them about their, um, their, their event that they're having, and it requires some information to be given, and if their information, and the first step in the whole process is the tourism board will look at that request and, and see if it meets the standard that was put together, before it ever goes to Click Content Studio.
And the standard is what they've outlined here?
Right.
Yeah, it's a start, that's what we, we need to begin, and yeah, we can modify, alter, change, but basically, long and short of it is, it okay's, and we do the marketing and not handing out funds to somebody to market, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I guess if there's, if there's anything that comes out, out of this policy, it's, it's that, that the money doesn't go to the business, and it goes to marketing.
It never has gone to the business, though.
Um, right.
But we've had people demand, ask for funding for them to take a set dollar amount for them, and they use it how they see fit. We're, no, we're gonna, give us the information if you qualify, and our media sources will take care of it if we see fit to be advertised with the tourism dollars.
I don't know if any business has ever gotten that money directly to advertise.
Because we haven't given it out, because, we've said, it doesn't meet the, the standards that we need to meet, that we can't give it out, but if it's promoting, and we can do the advertising through our advertising dollars.
Well, and I, I can tell you, the, the reason this came up to do it this way is because members of the tourism board said, uh, we've had people come to us and say, how do we get our event mark, how do we get money from the tourism board to market our event? And, and so then they didn't know how to answer, well, now they know how to answer, so if somebody comes to them and says, hey, we got an event, uh, can the tourism board, and say, go, go to the website, fill out an application, we'll review it, and then we will market it for you. So you don't, 'cause the two requests that we had that came in wanted funding to market their events, and we couldn't give out that funding, that, you know, they had their own ideas on how to actually market the events. And, and so that's really, you know, the one thing that came out of the discussions that I had with the tourism board was, we're the ones that are getting the contacts from people, 'cause they know we're on the tourism board, wanting to know how, how do we get at this money to be able to use it to market our event, and, and so then it's like, let's figure out what the answer to that is, so that we can give it to them now.
Yeah, this, this would, uh, it, it gives a direction on, on, on how businesses that wanna market their, it gives a direction on what to do, but it still doesn't really, um, I guess, how much, how much kind of mar, what kind of marketing, how much is it gonna be? Um, you know, if it's an art fair that is gonna draw fifty people from Fargo, and that's really what their, their goal is, is that gonna get the same bang as the Stevens County Fair?
That's what I mean, there's not, there's not actually a dollar fit, you're not saying, are you coming up with a dollar, like, this, this event is only gonna get five hundred dollars worth of marketing, and this event's gonna get five thousand, I mean, that's not what this is doing. It's still, we're still paying our, it's just using tourism dollars to pay our click.
Click content.
Click content, and justifying, and that, that's what I mean, I'm, I'm okay, because I think we need, you needed to have something in place, but there's still, in my mind, a big piece, like, well, people, yeah, anyway, um, like, where is the actual, there isn't actually a money exchange there, it's just providing our, that we already have set up, are, already are, and using the tourism funding source to pay for it, but we already have this, this set up for the, unless I'm totally off on understanding this, which I always can be, I'm not saying I'm not, I just, I, I, like I said, I appreciate the time and effort in putting something together, 'cause that was a big issue, that it, that now there's something written in format, people can apply, but it's still, as far as the actual tourism dollars that in our pot of money, this doesn't, you know, it, maybe that's just the way it is, okay, then we're gonna market everything with how they do it, putting it on the tourism calendar, promoting it, those three bullet points. Support of local event, or that's a supportive local event, I don't know where it says what they're actually gonna do.
Yeah, it, right at the end, I think, close to the end.
Doesn't it say right at the top under purpose that supportive of local event may include a number of things, including radio and print? So.
Yeah, those are the three things I was talking about, the three bullet points, is that's what it said, so everybody who applies and is approved, this is what they're gonna get in their package, this is their package.
I don't know if I read it that way, I think there could be things that the tourism board would do, but, let's say, I, this is my interpretation, correct me if I'm wrong, Blaine, but, let's say somebody comes to you with an event and says, it's only gonna bring twenty-five people to town. Then maybe the tourism board decides, yeah, we're not gonna pay for a big radio ad for you then, and we're not gonna pay for a big, uh, you know, thing in the paper, but we'll put you on social media. And if somebody comes and says, you know, this event's gonna draw five thousand people to the town, then maybe the tourism board decides, yeah, we'll pay for a radio ad, we'll pay for a print ad, but you gotta put our Morris Tourism in that ad, and we pay them directly, we don't give the money to you to pay that.
But we actually pay.
Yeah, no.
The content.
No, so what's gonna, so that's kinda what we did in the past, so what's gonna happen is, they're gonna have a standard package of ads, and they're gonna have a format for those ads, and you will get plugged into that ad, and they will run those ads, whether it's in print, whether it's in, so the print ad for, um, event A, event B, event C is gonna have the same format, the only thing that's gonna be different is probably the dates, and the, the name of the event, and stuff like that. And then one, one of the things that they've done is they've actually reached out, and they have, they have, um, agreements with certain radio stations and certain newspapers to get better deals for advertising, if they utilize them, and, and so then, if, if, if it comes to the board and they say, yes, this is one that we wanna market through Click Content Studio, we send that information to them, they will reach out to whoever the contact is and say, we're gonna put together, um, your ads, and we're gonna run them for you, but, but it's not gonna be the way you want them, it's gonna be the way we want them, so they're gonna be standard, more standardized ads, and, and that reduces the cost, you know, for putting together from a marketing standpoint, and then there's gonna be events that are gonna rise to a higher level, like Stevens County Fair, where, where, uh, and then they do their own advertising, so they're.
Would they even apply for this, or would we still, I mean, would they apply for this set package, and maybe I'm just getting way out of whack here, but, you know, like, I, that's, that's what I understood, and like, just like you said, Blaine, when somebody fills out the, the application, they're gonna get the package of,
Yeah.
the media package, whatever they're promoting there is, which included all of that, which you said, whatever, so, okay, but.
Well, I'm, well, excuse me, but being that they actually say examples of events that meet these criteria are Stevens County Fair, um, do they even have to apply? I mean, does.
But then we go back to if they're not as.
Contact them and say, okay, you know, what are you gonna do this year, and we'll try to.
But doesn't that defeat the purpose of having an application, if only certain groups have to apply and others don't?
Um, but, I, I see what you're saying, but it's the county fair, there is only one county fair, and it's our county fair, so I mean, so that, I don't, I don't have a problem with it listed here, I don't know that they have to apply, but that, that's up to the tourism board, I guess, you know? Um, so that would be just another checkbox for the, for the fair board, where, okay, we gotta apply for the.
Right.
Tourism deal, I don't know. But it's, it is a good start, and I, I agree with, with Kim, there, you know, they put a lot of work into this, and, and it looks good, and it's way better than what we've never had, so, um, but I think there's a lot of i's that need dotting and t's that need crossing, as, probably as time goes on, and that, oh, well, we don't even know what to do with this, you know, type of thing.
But it, it gives everybody an opportunity to try to have their event marketed, that's, that's what the purpose of it is, so they have the ability to ask us to market their event.
Well, that's what I mean, when you start saying, well, is, is the fair gonna have to do, well, if this is, gives everybody that, we, I mean, how do you take out one group and not do another one, anyway, that, that's just how I look at it, it's like, well, I know what, the fair draws in thousands of people, I'm not saying, but what I'm saying is to be, if, the, the reason we're creating this is so that everybody has the opportunity to apply for the marketing funds, everybody, not just this group or that group or the one, so if everybody's everybody, then it's everybody.
Yeah, so I think what we're looking for is a motion to approve this policy, and then, yeah, I mean, I'll go back to the tourism board, and we'll, we'll, I'll bring in your concerns, and it's gonna be something that's gonna be, um, ongoing, and, and, like you said, as, as we get started with this, we're gonna find out, hey, this doesn't work, that works, um, and then we, we adjust from there.
Yeah, I think this is one of those types of things that, that you, you gotta start somewhere, this is a really good place to start, and, uh, is it gonna answer all the questions, is it gonna fit every, uh, opportunity that comes along? I don't think so, I don't think it is, but it's a really good start, um, and they'll have to decide, you know, yes, everybody has to apply in this manner, you know, um, and maybe, some of the ones that, you know, like, specifically the county fair, um, they may have to reach out to them and say, hey, you have to apply for this.
If they wanna use our marketing, if they don't wanna use our mar, if they don't wanna use this, this package marketing, then they don't have to.
Why wouldn't they?
Well, I mean, I don't know, they, yeah, but, but they do their own, I mean, they have their own marketing package that has seemed to be.
I mean, one, one thing about specifically the, the county fair is, it, I think it's already part of our standard marketing, you know, because they've taken videos, they've taken drone videos, they've, you know, they've done all this stuff, and, and, you know, they're, those, uh, marketing packages are pretty cool, but.
Out of the tourism funds.
Out of tourism funds, yes.
Once we see that they've met the qualifications to use this money on a particular event, it should get easier if it's an annual event, and you do it every year, if it's Parade of Lights, or if it's the Snowcross, or the group that does the winter snowmobile, you know, and once you meet the standards, it should be much easier to come back the next year with the fair, it's an annual event that happens every year, with rare exceptions, so once you've met all the, the things that you need to meet, it should be much easier and less hoops to hop through, because we know that you, you haven't changed anything, so yes, you are gonna qualify for us to partake and help support and promote your event.
That's a good point.
Yes.
I will make motion approving a marketing assistance policy as highlighted, outlined before us tonight.
I will second that. Any further discussion? We don't need roll call on that, do we?
No, just motion.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, MS four stormwater permit violations, corrective actions.
Yeah, so this is a letter that we received from MPCA, actually, I don't know if you get one at home, I think we get one in, at City Hall for you specifically, um, um, to make sure that the mayor knows and understands what's going on with this, but, um, really quick, um, the city wound up becoming a MS four stormwater permit holder, uh, which means we have to comply with all the rules and regulations under the state of Minnesota, uh, under their permitting system, and then, um, we just started, I mean, we haven't been part of this program for very lo, long, and, and we got notice that we're being audited already on it, and, uh, which was kinda interesting to me, and Jim Ditmaner was the one that was the initial part of putting this together, and, and we worked with Bolton and Mank, um, as far as getting everything in to get our permit. Getting everything in to get our permit and so we were permitted, um, and then we got audited and, and it was really. Kind of an interesting process getting audited because, you know, there, there are so many pieces to this thing. That I don't think anybody ever really realized how detailed it was. And so then we called Bo- Bolton and Mink and they came in, they sat down with us and they had, they have somebody that actually worked in the state of Minnesota. That's in their office and we went through everything and, and the one interesting part about this that. So we got a letter and I would venture to guess at some point, uh, I can't, can't even remember when we're audited. Uh, but it's taken a long time for him to respond back to us. Uh, uh, at some point, we'll probably get a, a fine. For being in violation, but as you can see in my memo, um, the, the letter in, that we received states. Twelve specific violations and what is required to correct them and there are fifteen specific required corrective actions. That need to be taken place and you also note in the letter that they have acknowledged in the letter that we just got. That twelve corrective actions have already taken place. So realistically, what it, what it is, is that. Um, we're doing all the right things when it comes to dealing with stormwater and, and you know, a good example is. We sweep our streets all the time to get all the stuff out of the streets. And, and they keep track of how many loads that they, they take and that was part of the audit that we had to give them. And really what they identified was the, more of the documentation of the things that we're doing. And the training of our individuals that work in public works to be able to identify the issues with regards to stormwater. Is really what it comes down to and Bolton and Mink actually are, they're gonna be working with us to uh. Uh, help us with that training aspect and with the documentation part of that. Uh, so it shouldn't be a problem moving forward. The one thing I will note in this. That is important for, for you to understand as a city council is, we are mandated to make sure people aren't. Putting grass in the street, putting leaves in the street. Actually, in, in this audit, one of the things that. Uh, was a shortcoming is we have not educated the public as to um, animal waste on their yards. So realistically, they should be cleaning up and it is considered an illicit violation, uh, discharge. For somebody to have dog waste on their yard that is not taken care of, that runs into the street when it rains. And then goes into our storm sewer. So, when I'm talking about the detail of what's in the stormwater permit, that maybe. We didn't quite understand to the level that, you know, these people do this for a living and they sit down, they talk about that. Um, all the time in their offices, but we're gonna have to do some additional things to let people know that. Number one, you can't do what you're doing. Number two, we're gonna have to go out and correct it. So, so it could be that we have to start issuing tickets to people that are mowing. Grass into the street or not picking up dog waste on their yards. You know, because that's what's required in the storm, cause all the stormwater runs into the river.
And we as a city are responsible for what private property owners do on their property that, that water runs into. The system, anything that runs through our system, regardless of where it comes from in our jurisdiction, we're responsible for, correct?
Right. So, so it's, uh, so we, we, we have a really good plan in place. Uh, and they identified that, we're, we're probably way ahead of some other cities that, that are dealing with this, but at the same time. You know, you know, there's just a few last things that we have to make sure that we, we document and that's always been kind of an issue. Making sure that we're documenting all the things that we're supposed to document. A good example too is. When they do a hazardous waste cleanup. Out at the county garage, that is considered education uh, of the people in town. And so then we provide MPCA a copy of the little thing and the only thing we didn't know is how many people showed up there. Because that's one of the things that they do is they count the number of people that, uh, you know, when, when we're gonna talk about this. At a city council meeting and it was in the newsletter, those are all documentations of providing information to the public. You know, and, and uh, um, that's stuff that they looked at, but we have to do a little bit more work on this. Bolton and Mink, one of the things we're gonna do is start meeting with them quarterly to just identify the things that we have to do and. Make sure it's all documented for the future when we get audited again.
So at the county collection site, do we have to keep track of their address if they're from the city or is it just a general?
No, they just, they wanna know how many people showed up.
Okay, just curious.
But we don't run it, so then we have to get it from the county, you know, and those are kinds of things that we have to make sure.
But I, I expect the county does keep.
Yeah, they keep track of that because they, they, they need that for their, their documentation.
Sure.
What was the point of being the MS fours? Did we have to do that?
Yes, it's required by state law.
That all cities?
So they're, so they started with the big cities and they started working their way down, so now they're into the cities the size of Morris. Making them MS four permit holders.
Hmm, and then going through and auditing and letting them know all the things they're doing wrong.
Right.
And right.
And right, and right, well, you, and, and realistically, um. You know, every, pretty much everything was done. It was just a little bit of documentation and then training. So we actually have to do training with our public works employees, everybody, so that they know and understand what to look for when they're out there. Doing their jobs.
And what are they, I guess this was really hard, confusing me to me to read. I'm like, what, it doesn't really tell what the issues were, does it? Or is it buried in there really deep? Like the dog issues or the mowing and that, I mean, everything is in words that are like. What does this mean?
Well, I guess illicit waste, I did not think of dogs.
No, I didn't even know what illicit waste.
I would have never guessed that myself, you know, cause I have been, you know, I've, I've actually written an article and we. Use that in as, as an example of uh, city blog, as an example of educating the public on, don't mow your grass into the street.
Yeah, right.
You know, and, but people don't understand why, could, cause it goes into the storm sewer. And then ultimately it starts deteriorating, you know, and, and um, you know, and actually we in, investigated. One issue that wound up being Lake Crystal, where it smelled so bad down on South Street. So that's not the storm sewer, even though it's coming through the system, it's not created by the system, it's. It's a lake, lake even, and then, and it's a common thing in other places that it happens that way.
Did they ta- talk about here where they, where they found these discretions or these violations or whatever term they're using?
So our violation was we didn't educate the public. That they shouldn't be doing that. You know, with regards to dog waste, animal waste.
But these other ones, I don't.
It's all just paperwork.
It's just paperwork.
And training.
You know, so they go around and they look at the stormwater ponds. They actually have been cleaning out vegetation and stuff in stormwater ponds, but. You, you have to then follow up with documentation of when they did it. I mean, it, it's a lot of work to try to keep track of all that stuff. It really is. And so then, um, you know, we're gonna set, set up a program of how, how we initiate, you know, and, and. You know, for instance, uh, you know, just. What, what we need to do is we need to publish something indicating to the public about animal waste. You know, you're not supposed to do it. Now, every once in a while, I'll get a complaint from a neighbor that their neighbor has animal waste on their yard, but. Um, normally, the infraction is it's a nuisance to the neighbor not cleaning up after themselves and I've written letters, but. In this case, it's a violation of a permit that we hold. You know, so realistically, I think we have to be a little bit more aggressive on watching for that stuff. The one that always gets me is mowing. Grass. I don't under- understand how people learn to mow grass in the yard or in the street from their yard and, and, and just leave it there. You see that out in the country too. Somebody will be mowing a ditch and half the highway will be covered with grass.
Right.
And I'm sure somebody comes along and, you know, notifies the sheriff or somebody. So there's nothing that we have to do other than we just have to correct the last three items, which we will be doing. And uh, and then we should be good on that and, and then uh, moving forward. Uh, we have a process in place for how we're gonna deal with all this stuff.
So do we need to make a motion and?
No, this is informational.
Just information.
You know, and it's actually, you know, so I'll document the fact that we discussed this at the meeting and that'll be part of the informational. Part to the public to, you know, that, that this issue came up.
All right, any uh, final comments or questions on this?
Paperwork, paperwork.
A lot of paperwork. Okay, uh, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution approving change order number one. To improvement project to include sidewalks in a spring second lift.
Yeah, so this is, um, you probably noticed, you know, what's being done right now on, on East Sixth Street. But uh, one of the issues that came up is because of the, originally when we put together this uh, improvement project. Uh, we didn't wanna add sidewalk because sidewalk winds up being very expensive and it, and actually I can tell you that. Moving forward, when we start looking at doing more improvement projects, we're gonna be running into some probably major issues with. Being able to fund these things, uh, because the, you know, we, we have an appraiser that does a. General appraisal to give us an idea of maybe what the uh, value is of these improvement projects and. That whole system is, is really out of whack because it doesn't, it doesn't uh, um. Really acknowledge the fact that houses need streets and they need water and they need sewer and they need curb and gutter and stuff like that. And to, the system that the state has in place to be able to do these projects and assess them. Requires you to show that the, whatever the assessment is, um, that's gonna increase the value of your property. And, and uh, so we try to keep the assessments down and in this case, we decided that we weren't gonna replace all the sidewalk. But when you actually watched them do the construction where they're going across the sidewalk for water, going across the sidewalk for sewers. In a different area, um, sidewalks maybe weren't in the best shape to begin with. You know, and now all of a sudden, you're trying to figure out how to put new sidewalk here, 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 here. It just made no sense. You know, to do that. And so then we talked about it and, and the recommendation is, let's just do all the sidewalk, the estimated cost. For adding the additional sidewalk that was uh, above and beyond what was in the contract already for the utility connections. Was about sixty-five thousand dollars and uh, and then they can come in and they can just do one long, nice. You know, concrete uh, sidewalk and then cut it where they need to cut it and, and that's the recommendation. The other recommendation, and we've done this in the past, where um, you know, you put the first lift of blacktop on. Uh, in, in the fall and then over the winter, you may see some change in it because of. Uh, settling in a spot here or there and then you come back and you put the final, final uh, layer of blacktop on in the spring. So we've done that before, uh, actually, I think I, I remember in one.
Oh, yeah, we did.
That's, yeah, so, so it just gives you an opportunity to correct anything that might have settled. So that's, that's nothing out of the, the ordinary, so. Um, recommendation is to uh, approve the change order and if you look at that E-sixth street, they've already torn out all the sidewalk. So, in anticipating uh, doing it all.
Yeah, that makes sense on that, it really makes sense on the sidewalks because especially in sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, you know, if we had, just had it replaced, you know, the, the little pieces here, there, here, there, here, there. We're gonna have the sidewalk grinders come in, we're gonna have the mud jackers come in, we're gonna spend a lot more than sixty-five thousand over the course of. You know, of time, so this makes a lot of sense to do this.
Yep.
Is that on both sides? Is that side, where the sidewalks on both sides of those? So those will be, okay. And the same size, so we're not having to take down trees or ruin trees to add sidewalk?
No.
I know Sixth Street isn't a, a uh. It's not a connector, a connector or anything like that, but, but still, uh, if that's got nice sidewalks from. Here to there, people are gonna walk on it.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, de- definitely.
Lot more enjoyable to walk on Sixth Street than it is on Seventh Street with all the traffic.
Well, and just moving forward, it should be a normal part of the project.
Well, as the old school, if the land starts to get developed there, it'll be a connector to that whatever's there, so, yeah.
Remembering this moving forward, yes, that is part of the project. You're gonna move or lose a quarter or a third of the. The sidewalk with making the improvements, so, yeah, it's expensive, but it's just part of doing the job right is to. Replace, replace it instead of trying to repair it.
I will move the resolution approving change order number one to the twenty twenty-two improvement project to include sidewalks and a spring second lift.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Merlois, Toby, Miller?
Yes.
Gilson?
Yes.
Mary Pease?
Yes. The resolution approving preliminary twenty twenty-two tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so I'll go every, you should have a copy of a PowerPoint presentation. What I'm gonna do is just go through it. There's extra copies, so if you didn't get one, Jake, grab one. It's easier just doing it that way. Uh, there is one change that Whitney found when she was going through my, my work and. That had to do with the uh, uh, I, I highlighted the changes on, there, in the resolution I had. Uh, when I added the twenty twenty-two improvement bond, I actually doubled up uh, some numbers, just cutting and pasting and. And so the actual uh, budget for twenty twenty-two was less than what uh, what I had in the original resolution. Which actually made the uh, the increase in the overall budget, uh, seven point seven instead of what was in the original resolution. Which was, I think, five point seven. Uh, so, so you do, that's the resolution that we wanna work off of and then let me pull out the. Uh, it, the, the big thing to understand is that, um, this is the time of the year when we kinda throw everything on the table. And uh, and then I'm recommending that we meet in October, um, to sit down and talk about the uh. In a work session, sit down and talk about the budget and, uh, actually, uh, Kim and, and Kevin and I have been meeting and talking about. Performance evaluations and one of the, one of the things that we talked about was having an opportunity to talk. I'll just talk a little bit more, but then um, um, including department heads. So my recommendation is that department heads be at the uh, the October uh, work session. Now, that's just the date I pick. You, you can pick whatever date you want for your work session. Um, let me, I gotta find my.
I think it was October twenty-seven.
Or did I pull mine out already? Uh, my PowerPoint presentation. I was, I, I think I tweaked mine just because of the. The change in the numbers on. Let me just grab yours. I think I, oh, here it is right here. Yeah, so I know, I, you know, you can decide that afterwards, but, so if you look at, um, this is the preliminary levy. Were required by state law to um, send to the county a preliminary levy uh, by September thirtieth. Uh, in addition, we have to set, as part of this resolution, we have to set a public hearing. Public discussion, it's not necessarily hearing, public discussion on the budget and levy. Uh, and so in the resolution, it talks. And so in the resolution, it talks about six o'clock on December thirteenth. We cannot start before six o'clock. With that discussion to give people a chance to be there. And then in addition, just so you know, the legislature also included some additional information that has to go to the county auditor. With regards to some rolled up numbers for our budget. That Whitney has gotten the format for and put together that information, so when everybody gets their tax statements. You're going to wind up getting. Another form that's going to have some additional information on there with regards to, you know, what what our taxes are, what our. Some of the expenses are, other revenues are. And that's one of the things the legislature decided that they wanted to do is to provide more information to the public. I don't know that it's going to be any help to the public because they're probably not going to understand what any of it means. Especially in the rolled up format, but that is a requirement that we have and. That is part of it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to just touch base on these. These. Different things in this. PowerPoint presentation, but I'm not going to go into detail because. We will go into detail when we get into December and present the 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 final budget to the city. But there's two parts to what we're doing. One is the levy. Where we levy taxes on the taxpayers in the city of Morris to be collected next year and provided back to the city. This tax levy that I'm presenting here in the preliminary budget is a million seven hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. It's six point six percent more than than the levy for last year that was collected this year. In that six point six percent, there's three point three percent of that. That is a new bond issue that we did for an improvement project. So it gives you an idea of the city's share of that project, what it means in terms of raising taxes. And then there's three percent for just a general levy. And and what I always like to say is that. That's the highest that we can go and then between now and December, we can decide what we want to do with the levy. We can make it zero, we can make it three, we can make it whatever we want. And there's going to be some good issues to discuss in in that work session about that. This does, this levy does include. An a new, includes a loader lease, but the actual sweeper that we bought was part of a bond issue, so that's in the. In the new bond that we wound up doing, so that shows up in debt service. How how do we, how do we apply our levy to taxpayers? The first step in that process is there's a calculation of the market value of all the property in town. So for twenty twenty three, the estimated market value, this isn't final yet because the county is still working on evaluations. But the current estimated market value for property in Morris is about three hundred and two million dollars. And it represents about a five percent increase in the value of the property over last year's market value. So it's important to understand that there's. Construction that's going on, there's also increases in value. Everybody probably knows and understands that housing values went up. You know, with with some of the things that have been going on and that does get it reflected in some of the things that happen. At at the. Assessor's office when they're looking at valuations, but. It doesn't necessarily affect what we do when we're doing taxes. So that market value is then applied against all the tax rates that the state establishes as being allowable tax rates for properties. There's a different tax rate for commercial, there's a different tax rate for industrial to set values. And 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 develop tax capacity and so then we come up with what's called a tax capacity. Number for the city and that's if you applied a hundred percent of your taxing authority against. The the taxable property in town, this is what the levy would be, would be three million four hundred and twenty six thousand. And actually, the tax capacity increased about five point five percent. So, you know, we we just saw that the value went up about five percent, but the tax capacity went up a little bit more than that. And it could be just because of rates and how they're calculating it from the state level. So then we take that tax capacity and we apply our levy to it. We set our levies one million seven hundred and sixty six, so that winds up being about. Forty nine point eight percent of the tax capacity for the city. And that tax capacity rate is down from the current year's rate of fifty one percent. So it's down about one point two percent. So in effect, if we levied the same amount of taxes. On property in in town, we would wind up seeing the. Your your taxes would go down. And and it's some cities, if you go to Minneapolis, you'll hear them talk about this. That they know and understand exactly what their tax capacity is, they know what their values are. And when they're figuring levies, they figure out how much they're going to increase the tax rates on. Property taxpayers in the city versus us, we don't really get into that because it's really complicated trying to explain it to people. But those are just some general numbers that it's important for for you to understand. Then we get into. Our revenues and expenses. I just made some bulleted items on the six point six percent increase in levy. We have stable LGA. Because the state of Minnesota is sitting on a major surplus right now. Whether or not they can figure out what to do with it, I'm not sure. We know and understand that in our labor contracts, wages are going up two point five percent. There are reduced costs in this budget for for costs of law enforcement and we'll talk about that probably more in. In the. The budget work session. What this budget does is it throws everything onto the table, so we didn't reduce the levy because. Of any reduced costs in law enforcement. We leave everything on the table so that we can have a discussion about it. It continues to provide. Capital improvement money for roads and. Things, things like that, seal coating, all those kind of projects that we've been doing. It continues to fund capital outlay. One of the things. You're going to see is that the capital outlay requests are always high. I think right now they're like three point five million dollars and. We we with grants and and aids and stuff, we probably have about one point seven million to pay for it. This this budget includes increases in the utility fees, both. All three of them actually, water, sewer, and I'm going to recommend that we raise the stormwater fee. Because the stormwater fee actually pays the administration for the MS four permit. You know, and we know and understand that we we have to focus on doing all the things that we have to do with that. If you look at the budget from last year to this year, this actually, what you see is doesn't have the change in it yet, but. It's it's about seven point seven percent more. Now that takes into consideration, this is the total city budget. Into consideration, the. The added bond issue and and some of the things that happens. On the budget summary, you can see all the changes that take place with regards to the different funds that we have. And then the general fund, which is the library expenses and. Well, actually, general fund is the major operating budget for the city. That has all the departments in except library. Libraries get its own fund, but. You're looking at a three point six percent increase. This, I put this note in here because. We're required to to do our debt. Request for things like the loader lease. In the general fund, even though we move it over into the capital outlay fund, but that's a counting standards requirement. And you'll see that it's three point six percent more than it was for last year. I just got done saying we had reduced costs in law enforcement. But yet the general fund budget is going to increase by three point six percent. And what you'll find is you'll find all the money is sitting in the capital outlay fund to decide what you want to. Or the capital outlay fund transfer to decide what you want to do. Normally, you know, I I talk about having at least a two hundred thousand dollar. To three hundred thousand dollar capital outlay transfer because we have to buy things. You know, for all the different departments and and so that's really where it winds up sitting, but it also includes two per. Two point five percent increase in wages, includes a ten percent increase in insurance. For health insurance, we still haven't found out what that that's going to be yet. We will shortly. It includes other things that have gone up, including fuel. We know that fuel costs are a lot higher now. And then the one thing I mentioned in my budget guidance, I I believe, and 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 talking about that is. This includes one new public works employee. So I can tell you just based on the preliminary numbers that the the cost reduction by. Going into a contract with law enforcement for law enforcement with the county reduces our costs by about two hundred thousand dollars. But the cost of one public works employee is about seventy eight thousand dollars with benefits. So it's just important to understand. So all this stuff is getting thrown on the table to talk about. And and I think I mentioned in my budget guidance discussion that. You know, there's a reason why we're looking at adding back a position that we reduced before. But and then you get into other budgets like the capital improvement fund, which is where we do our road maintenance, those kind of things. It's funded by state aid road money, it's funded by franchise fees from utilities, communications utilities. Otter Tail Power. And then some, you can see the list of some of the things that we do, crack filling, mudjacking, engineering to. To to work on things like reclaims, sidewalk cutting, that's been a very successful. Process and I think we got one year left and we should should have covered all the sidewalks in Morris.
I just want to highlight while we're going through all this and we discuss it on occasion, but not enough. Our franchise fee money was established to do extra road work.
Right.
In our community to do the the seal coating, the crack filling, the upgrades, and that was what that fund was to be used for. So just looking through our predicted, our future expenses, our future endeavors that it just. To that, that was to get our roads in shape because our roads were in such rough shape. That's what that money was for to be used specifically for that, so. I guess hopefully keep in mind that that's where that money should get spent.
Right.
If we weren't going to spend it on that, we said we weren't going to have a franchise fee tax no more, so. The old, yeah, they go away, but they never go away. We know that, but just remember that that's the extra money to do work to keep our roads or to get them in shape. Thank you.
Yep.
And but to add to that is is we've done well.
Yeah.
But just remember. Because of franchise fees, but we have to continue.
We need to spend that to take care of that because it used to be a lot bigger issue.
So let let me just ask this, is there something in here that you think we shouldn't be spending money on?
I'm just looking at our, no, I'm just highlighting for us to keep that.
Yeah.
In mind that that's where that money. Should be targeted and I understand and you'd said in previous discussions, well, yeah, it all gets done, but just that was extra money.
Because I was just going to point out, there's one item in here that isn't really pertaining to streets and that's the sidewalk cutting, but. What we do is we transfer the fifty thousand from capital outlay into the improvement fund to pay for that. So then all the money that comes in for state aid roads and for franchise fees is going towards the street maintenance items. Seal coating, you know, crack feeling, doing reclaims, which. We didn't do in the beginning when I first got here, which is a tremendous way of trying to improve roads moving forward, but. But yet, yeah, you're right, that's where it should go. And and that's that's where we're trying to put it. And then you have the capital outlay fund, so you can see that for twenty twenty three, we have one point eight million dollars. That's, it's up about fourteen percent, but that's one of those funds too that. It really fluctuates a lot depending on some other revenue sources that come in. You know, I just got done saying that we want to transfer in about two, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. And we're talking about a one point eight million dollar budget. About eight hundred thousand of that comes from the grant that we got for the bus garage. You know, to to do the transit bus garage, there's probably another, what, three? No, it's probably more than that for the transit buses. So so we get funding for the buses, so there's there's some revenue sources that come in that help. Pay for for some of those expenses that we have. And we'll get a chance to sit down. I think it's a, you know, good opportunity for department heads to talk to you about. You know, why they want certain things and we do know that costs are going up, you know, a good example is. We used to, we get like standard, low level pickup work trucks. That's what we buy. So we don't buy four door, you know, cab trucks. We buy the regular old fashioned pickup trucks that that. Don't have all the fancy electronics and all that and you can still get them. And we were getting them probably for twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars and this last year, I think they said they're. They're right around ten thousand dollars more. So it's the costs of vehicles are going up considerably and anybody that's. You know, looked at buying a vehicle knows and understands that. You know, so that's some of the stuff that we have to deal with. And and there's a list in in your budget packet that shows all those different things that. The department heads have requested and typically what I do is I. I try to put in the things that I know we're going to have to do. And then try to come up with a number that spends the money that we have available. But that's just to get it, get it on the table so you can talk about it and try to figure it out. We're going to talk, talk with the fire department because they still have an issue with the really old ladder truck. That they want to do something with and a new ladder truck is like one point four million dollars now. You know, so how how do we figure out how to deal with something like that? So some good discussions. The library fund. Typically, the library fund is the other fund that gets local government aid and then they get a tax levy to pay for their stuff. You can see the library fund's up about fifteen, almost sixteen percent, but. That's because they have some capital outlay requests for carpeting and and furniture and some other stuff that. Typically, what we do is we'll we'll move money from capital outlay into the library fund to pay for it because it's a separate fund. But that'll normally drive up their their budget number quite a bit and then it'll come back down next year depending on what's going on. Stormwater admin, I added a little bit more, you know, we're not, we're not talking about raising a lot of extra money in there, but. Typically, you you've been around long enough, you know, my philosophy is you you raise, if you're going to raise fees, you raise them a small percent. You know, in this case, we're probably talking three percent. It's not going to, it's not going to, people don't really notice it as much, but at the same time. We have to make sure that we're maintaining enough money and 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 we're doing the things that we have to do. Lodging tax, actually, I budgeted a little bit more money in there because. The old Hotel Two Hundred, I think, is going to open up shortly here. And start renting out rooms with the idea that maybe next summer they're going to rebrand brand it from what I understand and and. Start start renting out rooms. I mean, the goal is to get it back to where it's a hotel that's renting out rooms, which means. You're going to have lodging tax coming in off of that hotel that you don't have now. So we kind of anticipate that. I think he was going to try to get some room rentals started in October. Debt service, you can see the different bond issues that we have. In in some cases, we've refunded. The one thing I will tell you is that right now. Actually, I haven't talked to Whitney about this because it just struck me recently. When the feds raise interest rates on people borrowing money. It actually typically will raise interest rates on money that you invest in banks. It actually typically will raise interest rates on money that you invest in banks. So the interest rates for housing was way down, I think they're talking maybe five, six percent for a house loan now. Which, you know, I don't, they're trying to slow down what's happening with the economy. Uh, but, but that could mean that we have a little bit more for uh interest in.
I've seen it already.
Yeah, so.
If any, if we're renewing, the interest rates are higher.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda funny how that works and, and I did not, I did, I did not add anything else for interest income, but at the same time. You know, the bonding costs for a project moving forward are gonna be a lot more. And we saw that this time when we sold bonds, it was more than the last time that we sold bonds. Um. So that's debt service and then you get into the water utility uh fund and you'll see that there's a negative balance in there. Of a hundred and nine thousand dollars, there's a couple of things that are happening in there and uh, we're gonna take a closer look at it. But one of the things that uh, I think we talked about before is we are required, normally cities don't cash. Uh. Cash depreciation, cause we don't, we don't need to do that, you know, so they calculate it when they do the audit. But when we borrowed the money from the state of Minnesota for, under the uh public facilities uh authority. Um. One of the requirements was we had to set aside cash in a restricted area for the future replacement of the water plant. So in this budget, I didn't do it in last year's budget, but the auditors do it at the end of the year. So in this budget, I actually expensed that out, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're estimating that we're gonna have to. Set aside into our reserve, so it stays in the utility. But you can't spend it for anything, although we had a discussion about, you know, what is, what happens if you have a major failure and a. Piece of equipment or anything, can you use it for that or is it just building? I don't know if they know the answer yet to that question, but. And then we, we uh, we're in, in phase two of a, a wellhead protection. Plan that we're required to have by next year, and so there's about forty thousand dollars in that fund to pay for that. Uh, phase two of that plan, um, we're seeing costs of chemicals go up. Um, one of the things that uh, we had a really good deal with the farmer to uh, get rid of our lime sludge and, and. That farmer no longer needed anymore, and so now the cost of hauling out lime sludge is, is gone up. Actually, it's closer to what they estimated when we first built the plant. Uh, so those are all parts of that water utility, utility fund uh that we have to deal with. So we're gonna take a closer look at that to uh figure out where those rates need to be. Um, sewer utility fund is in pretty good shape, there's a major capital uh outlay item that, that uh. They have to take care of and that's the Jetter truck that does just a lot of work keeping our sewers clean. Uh, which is very important, um, but that's kind of a one-time shot type of thing and, and they have. Good reserves, so they're in really good shape. Um, refuse fund is a clearing fund that we just take money in and we pay it back out to the refuse hauler. There's a little bit that comes to us for administration. And then we get into the liquor store and every year he's pretty confident in what he thinks he's gonna do, but. Uh, we're starting to see the effects of the COVID era wind down a little bit. Uh, so one of the things I did with this slide was kinda showed you what the budgeted revenues and expenses are. One of, one of the things that we haven't done, we didn't do it this year, I can't remember if we did it last year, but. We had, we had drawn a little bit more of the liquor store profit and used it for some one-time things, which is a good way to use it. You're not committing it for anything and we didn't do that this year and we, we, I don't think we did it last year. So you can see that the net profits for the liquor store are about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, they have some reserves. Uh, in, in, in that fund, so if we did need to pull a little bit more money for a, a certain thing, we could do that. Uh, but, but I think uh, you can see the revenues for uh, uh, actual budgeted for twenty twenty-one was twenty-five hundred. Or two point five million, uh, the actual is two point four million, um, for twenty twenty-two, it was two point four. Right now we're at about one point three, but the busiest time of the year is usually November, December. You know, for uh liquor sales, so liquor store is in good shape. General Garage is um, basically our mechanic, um, the only issue with that is that uh, um. We lost the law enforcement, so uh Brad did a lot of the maintenance on uh police vehicles. Uh, but he has lots of maintenance he has to do on transit vehicles and other city vehicles, so. Uh, he'll just be refocusing his time on those types of things, it's nice to have a mechanic in your, in your organization. That can repair most of the stuff that you have and you don't have to go to um, the dealers to try to get things taken care of. And then the last slide is for the future. Um, as I said earlier, state funding for local government aid is, is, is very stable. Um, I actually don't think that they're gonna be, it depends on what happens in the election. Who's, who's in charge, they can't seem to work together. Uh, we, we anticipated that we would see an increase in local government aid in the last legislative session and they didn't do anything. You know, but in this legislative session, um, it, it's possible with the surplus that they have that they might increase LGA. We'll wait and see, but, but we know for sure that we won't get cut, cause they can't cut it. Uh, unless they rebudget to cut it and I don't see that happening and as long as they have money for the budget. Um, you know, they, they, it's gonna be okay. Uh, next year, union contracts get negotiated and that's gonna be interesting, uh, because we know there's some big issues with wages. Um, inflation is still affecting us a lot, so we're watching that close. And then one of the things that we talked about last city council meeting was finding employees for city jobs is gonna continue to be difficult. So there's probably gonna have to be some ongoing discussions about, you know, how we handle that. And it's no different anywhere else, you know, I talked to other cities, they're winding up having the same problems that we're having, especially on the low-end jobs. Um, university work study, I think their interns are getting fifteen bucks an hour now. McDonald's is paying seventeen bucks an hour, starting and, and, you know, we're, we're trying to bump up our liquor store to get to fifteen dollars an hour. So that's that, I would answer any questions you might have, um. And then uh, you can talk about when you wanna have a work session to sit down and go, go through everything and then. Uh, we'll, we'll bring the final budget back on, I think it's the eleventh, is it the eleventh of?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth of December and then. Anybody that wants to come can ask questions about what's going on, uh, you will get tax uh statements that show. How our levy affects, you know, what's gonna happen with your taxes.
Okay, thank you, that's a lot of information, as always. So.
So we got two resolutions, one's to approve the preliminary levy and the other one is to approve the preliminary budget. And set the uh. Truth and taxation hearing.
Okay, we'll take the levy uh resolution first.
I will move on the approval of the preliminary two thousand twenty-two tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-three. In the amount of one million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars. Which is an increase of six point six percent increase over our last levy amount, but that is the max allowable. It can be less than that, but not greater than that.
I will second.
Very good, thank you. Any uh further discussion on the uh tax levy? We'll have low call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi, Waller, Goetzen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. Excuse me, then that resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-three budget for the city of Morris.
I'll move on that resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-three budget for the city of Morris.
I will second.
Okay, in that uh, resolution is that as printed, uh, our um. Budget levy or truth and taxation, I guess you call it, uh, at six o'clock Tuesday, December thirteenth. That's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, any other uh discussion? On the budget? Uh, we'll have a low call vote on the resolution, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Goetzen?
Yes.
Waller? Salvi? Mary?
Yes. And then we should set a, the budget work session, right?
Right.
And you had mentioned uh.
I thought I read it in there, but I couldn't find it.
I did find it.
It's in there, I found it, but.
The twenty. In the past, we've done like the, the last Thursday in October.
Yeah.
That's how I.
Will that work for everybody? That's better for me later in the month, I guess normally the early October, I have a lot of.
Yeah.
Different things I'm obligated to, but. I would prefer it to be, yeah, that.
October twenty-seventh is the last Thursday in October. Do you do that five fifteen also?
Yep, and we'll bring some food.
I, so I'll make a motion that we have a budget works, work session on uh five fifteen on October, Thursday, October twenty-seventh. Right here.
I will second.
Any discussion? All voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. City manager report.
Uh, I'm just gonna touch on two things, I did talk to Chris Riley today about the demolition of Morris Floral and. And uh, it's probably gonna be later in October, just because they're working on all the other stuff that we're doing here. So it's like, it, it's not the number one priority for them to take care of right now, they wanna get all their road projects and all that kinda stuff done, but. But, but they do have the demo permit for that, the other thing I would touch on is the state demographer population estimate. You know, that was kind of a shocker when I first saw it and I didn't understand it and we're still working on trying to figure that out, but. Um, we just had a census and our, our population was counted at five thousand one hundred and five people. And the, the state demographer's estimate for this year is four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three. Which puts us underneath five thousand, which is kind of the magic mark that we wanted to stay above for state aid road funding and stuff like that. Uh, and so we're working on that, trying to figure it out, um, near as I can tell is that. They're taking into consideration some factors like the student population at the university. Um, because we did not drop in, they, they're estimating that we dropped in housing. Um, occupied housing, which I don't understand, that's not the number that they're given. So they, 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 they must have a formula that they put into place that tries to predict that. And so then uh, we're, we're working with them, I've talked to, you know, one of the doctorate level people that works there and. It's like, I don't get it, you know, it's like, there's no way for us to go out and count the population and it just happened. You know, so now, now you're taking a formula and you're estimating population. Uh, we're actually adding houses, we haven't torn down, I think one house got torn down, one house got moved. And that's typically the information we wind up giving them is uh building permits, you know, demolition and, and uh, buildings, so. So we'll continue to watch that, uh, I'm meeting with MinDOT, uh, I believe uh, the second Monday in October. Uh, the MinDOT district engineer uh goes out and does a, a city visit, so I'm gonna be meeting with them. And that's one of the questions I'm gonna talk to him about. You know, otherwise we might have to, you know, talk to our legislators or somebody and try to figure out, you know, what the next step is for us. And then I would just answer any questions that you would have on anything else that's in there.
I understand that Riley's uh, are busy and they've got a lot of stuff on her plate and with the Morris floral uh demolition being pushed back. Um. It looks like hell.
I know.
Um, but you know.
It's fallen in.
It, it would, it would be nice if we could at least ask them if they could go in and. Clean it up a little bit, get, take care of the weeds.
Well, secure it and take care of the weeds, I mean, we expect that of everybody else, so I don't know.
Right.
We do, I mean, we were expecting that of the previous owner, um, so I guess, and then when we took ownership briefly, we took care of that, I thought, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the top of an evergreen tree lay in there, you can't really see it anymore because of the weeds, but. Um, you know, it blew off during the, the windstorm and it's still there and it's dead, looks like a dead tree. Um, it, it just would be nice if they could, you know, I don't know, I don't think it would cost that terrible much to. Go in there and clean it up a little bit, but, and the others, the other thing is of course, the security of it. Is, is, are the doors blocked off good enough to keep kids out and?
No.
You know, I don't think it, yeah, I don't think so either. So I, I think it's something we should ask them. Um, I know.
I can do, I can do that.
I know the neighbors, uh, neighbor businesses.
Yeah, I got a call.
Don't like to look at it, I don't like.
Well, we do have a policy for your owners that, that their weeds in their yards can't get, you know, that's the ordinance that they can't get so high or they get the notes. So here we have a business that the weeds are knee-high, if not waist-high, but, yeah, agreed.
Yeah, we can, we can send them a weed letter and go over and mow for them.
Make a call, talk to them, yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda, but tell them it's an eyesore and it.
But it was on the agenda how many different times to get this, we're not, we're not, I mean, they'd like to, but again, if they continue to be busy, which yes, we understand. But then that just needs to get taken care of.
Yeah.
As far as.
I will relay that.
All right.
Chris is, Chris is the one that's in charge of uh Joe Riley Construction, so I, I'll definitely talk to him tomorrow.
All right, thank you, uh, airports open?
Airports open, yep. Yep, that uh, all turned out really nice.
Your plane's warming up in the morning.
I think, I think sometime in the, um, sometime in the spring, we'll have like a grand opening, kind of flying kind of thing. Where I've been talking to some of the pilots, well, and superiors, probably interested in doing that, that's a big deal for them.
Apron way around, has that gotten done? You talked about the seal coating or the crack filling around?
Yeah, that part isn't done yet, but the main runway and everything is done.
We just had some funding approved at our last meeting and said that they were coming in to do it and I assumed it was gonna be done, but. As we discussed then, October is on Saturday and you get late in the year, it's sort of tough to do that.
I think the crack filling is probably done already, cause I know the, the, the company reached out to us and wanted to, to know about a couple of things. Um, and as, as I indicated in here, the hundred low lead tanks gonna be delivered in uh November. And then Westmore will take care of uh switching that over and putting all that into place and. And then the farmer that farms there uh has been given information from the engineers about the boundaries, cause the grass runway disappears. Uh, with, with this project, it's, it's, it's not on the map anymore, so any pilot that is looking for a place to land. They've got a long runway and they can put her down there.
We're having, uh, I'm sure everybody got this, uh, Morris model is uh sent out to save the date for the city of Morris solar PV celebration. Um, for. October thirteenth at one thirty, right here.
Here at the library.
Uh, it, it shows the library, but it says here, community center.
Yeah, it's gonna be here, so we'll have an event in here and then I, then I, we might walk over for a photo op in front of the. Library or the liquor store or maybe out in front here.
We'll have a meeting on the. We'll have a meeting on the eleventh, so a reminder then.
Yeah, good.
Just.
Yeah, Griffin's been putting off. I was actually gonna mention that, but he already took care of that, sent it out. He does a very, very good job.
Yeah, he, he did send that out also.
And Professor Vedder was here visiting uh, yesterday. Uh, and so then he is just absolutely amazed at what's going on in Morris and just maybe one quick note. I sit, I sit back in amazement every time I go out to West Central Research and Outreach because I, I sat through a presentation. They're looking at uh. Um. Green ammonia. Uh, so if you think of all the anhygras ammonia that's used in the farming areas here and the idea that they could build a plant. Possibly to generate it because you need wind, you need water and you need uh. Um, a machine that can do it. And so then they have a grant out there to. Do a test study of a, a smaller scale uh, operation and they had the first. One in the world. To do the conversion in the world. And so they're recognized in the world as. This place where they do this research and so then this, they're gonna cite this field research uh, operation. And you, you know, it's the University of Minnesota, it's the National Research. Uh, um, the foundations that are all working on, some of the best scientists are working on it. It, I just am amazed at. You know, what's going on out there. And so he comes over here and, and uh, Zarbeck's got this new electrolyzer plant. That got cited there. They were selected as the place in Europe to build this. Like three billion dollar plant to make these electrolyzers. That, that are used in that process of converting um, to, to. Anhy, to ammonia and to hydrogen and stuff. I'm not a scientist, but, but you sit back and it's like, they're talking about Morris. You know, and there's gonna be people from all over the world that are gonna come here to look at this. Thing that they're building and, and I think it's like a three-year project to build it and they got this massive grant to do it, so.
And there's still is only about three or four in the world that have the same. Technology that we have up here when, when our sister city was here this spring. And I went through the tour with them and they were explaining that, but yes, just one of the very few that it's just mind-boggling that.
So the university professors down at the main campus, this is their field test site, you know, that they're working on. You know, and, and so it's really kinda cool. And so then Professor Vedder is a very well-known person in Europe that's working on these. Different technologies and stuff like that and he's just smiling from ear to ear when he came to Morris. And saw, you know, sitting in the, actually Griffin did a very good job of explaining. You know, the amount of energy that our solar system on top of this building in city hall produces is enough to cover what we use. You know, and then the liquor store it won't because obviously they use a lot more and the library it won't because of the ground. Heat pump system, but these two buildings, you know, were over a hundred and ten thousand kilowatt hours that we've already generated. And the library's got the biggest array and, and that one, once they got it fired up, they had to. Do some underground directional wiring for power. Once I got that thing fired up, it's just producing energy. Uh, the way it's supposed to be producing it. So I think there, the library's up to like twenty-seven thousand. Kilowatt hours or, or any that's been produced. So it's nice to know that, you know, Morris is recognized. You know, whether it's what we're doing or what the research farm is doing or the university itself is doing.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Actually, I was amazed when I seen the roof of the library out there. It's like, wow.
I wondered where it was. It's like, where's this building at?
You can't, you can't see it from the ground.
Well, and the other, the other thing is, we had nine, ninety-five mile an hour winds during the May storm. Neither one of those flat roof solar systems is anchored into the roof. It's all ballast and it's engineered to be ballast so it'll stay when the wind blows and. We never had one issue with it at all during that. It never stopped. Stopped working and we actually had one panel blew off on the end on this. Building and got replaced, but I think that was just a connector issue where. Because all the rest of them are sitting there, but uh, yeah, it's, and then there'll be uh. That, that connection between Germany and, and uh, us will continue on because they, they like coming here and. They want people to come there, so we'll see how that goes.
Cool. Anything else about city manager report? Any other business to come before the council?